Covid secure environment and their own social distancing is properly observed. The meeting will be webcast live and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. As a result of the reduced room capacity, we have one member of the public who is asking questions today and report authors who are presenting items that are observing the meeting on the screen from the reception room. They will be invited into the chamber but this will mean that there will be a short pause between these items to allow them to make their way to the room safely. I therefore ask for your patience to allow this to be managed. Please can I request that all mobile telephones other than such equipment are switched to silent mode as not to disturb the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square, as most people know. I love Tudor Square. Can we ask each cooperative executive member in turn to introduce themselves and if there is anything else to mention? So I'll just go round the room. I'll start with Julie.
Good afternoon everyone. councillor Julie Grochard, member for community engagement and governance.
Thank you Julie Jane.
Councillor Jane Dern, executive member for education, children and families.
Kate.
Good afternoon everyone. I'm councillor Kate McDonald and I'm the executive co-op member for finance and resources.
Paul.
Good afternoon. I'm the executive member for housing, roads, waste management.
Thanks Paul. George.
Afternoon Chair. I'm George. I'm the executive member for health and social care.
Paul.
Thank you. I'm councillor Paul Turpin, executive member for inclusive economy, jobs and skills.
Thanks Paul. Douglas.
Thank you. Douglas Johnson, executive member for climate change, environment and transport.
And we have apologies in for councillor Alison Teal, who unfortunately is suffering with Covid. We wish her well. If she's watching today, hope you get better soon, Alison. Okay, we've also got senior officers in the room. I'll just ask them to introduce themselves. Mick. Thanks Mick. Gillian.
Gillian Duckworth, director of legal and governance.
Kate.
Kate Joseph, chief executive.
Eugene.
Eugene Walker, executive director of resources.
John.
John McElroy, executive director, people services.
Anne. Anne Abbey.
Abby Brown Sword, committee secretary.
Thank you very much. And also apologies from councillor Mazza Bell, who has a bereavement and is dealing with the issues. We wish Maz and our thoughts go out to her and his family. Thanks everyone. Item three, exclusion of public and press. Have we got any? Thank you Abby. We've got an item 12 on the agenda. There is an appendix which is not available to the public or press. It contains exempt information. If members wish to discuss that, we will ask members of the public and press to kindly leave for that part. Next item is declarations of interests. Is there any? Paul?
Item 11 Chair, I have business associations with three casinos in the city.
Thank you Paul. Any other declarations of interest? If not, thank you for that. Item five, minutes of previous meeting. Can we approve these as a correct record? Thank you. Item six, today we've got a number of questions from a member of the public. Nigel Slack, welcome Nigel. Nice to see you again. Please would you like to ask your questions and then we'll ask councillor McDonald to answer. Thanks.
Thanks Chair. Question one, the briefing attached to this question, which was circulated previously, outlines my comments and concerns about the recent land and property plan passed by the Labour Party members at the last cooperative executive committee meeting on the 20th of October 2021, whilst the Green Party members abstained. The questions below are also embedded in the comments document, but I'll reiterate it here for clarity. So 1A, have exec members had the chance to see and debate the final plan and to approve the documents signed off by the cooperative executive member for finance as resources? This is very different to the plan that was passed at the last exec meeting. 1B, who will be the corporate landlord in the executive model? 1C, the plan suggests it is inspired by successes delivered through our previous plan, assets for our communities. What examples are there to illustrate this? 1D, there is not a single mention of the city's history and heritage assets at all in this plan. A dangerous and damning omission that undervalues the visitor economy potential for the city in helping, quote, "improve lives and create a place which works for Sheffield's people", will this be addressed in the sub-policies and in which policy area will it fall? 1E, how will property services engage with city residents to make them part of the decision-making process? And 1F, in modernising the estate, will repurposing and refurbishment be at the top of the priorities? Since from an environmental point of view, these are generally better options than demolition and new builds. 1G, in modernising our city, what evidence has been gathered that major developments are still the right solution to the market for workplace and retail? 1H, in tackling the climate emergency, to what outside organisations is Sheffield listening? And from what outside sources might investment or other funding be available? 1I, will the city adopt a make the developer pay approach? 1J, in our framework, will council reflect the changing work profile likely to remain even after the pandemic and reverse the damaging centralisation of services for a more neighbourhood approach for service engagement for the public? 1K, in unlocking money, what work has been done to identify and what are the surplus estate assets proposed for disposal in 2022/23 financial year? 1L, in managing our estate, council commit to be transparent in the decisions we take. We recognise the importance of good standards of governance in public authorities and the need for robust processes to guide decision-making. We will be transparent in the decisions we take to ensure we can legitimately withstand challenge. What will this look like? 1M, in the clear approach to asset management, there are so many questions, but to highlight just three. Quote, gather, record and maintain information about the estate to provide sufficient information to make decisions. Is this really not available? How have decisions been made in the past without such information? Again, quote, only hold the minimum estate required for service delivery, reducing inefficient, underutilised and unfit property through timely demolition where appropriate and disposal, thereby avoiding ongoing associated costs. Businesses of all sizes have recognised the danger of being too lean. Emergency impacts like the pandemic and the climate emergency need quick responses and that is not possible without a bit of fat in the system. Will council ensure property decisions are made with this in mind? And again, to quote, ensure any lettings for community use are based on sound business cases, meet needs of the community and city and are viable and sustainable. What support will be offered to community and social enterprises to ensure a level playing field against corporate interests? 1N, in what success looks like, clarity is needed about the range of sources council will use to build the evidence base. Is there any clarity available? 1O, quote, we will develop measurable targets. How did council measure success up to now? And 1P, what is the timeline for these further policy documents? Question two, the vote on the land and property plan was not a unanimous vote, but this is not reflected in the minutes. Why not? Will council undertake to ensure future votes are recorded votes and published transparently? The minutes as they stand do not reflect the actuality of the vote and could mislead the public. Question three, when will details of the significant engagement on the sub-policies be available and what form will this take? And finally, question four, I was disquieted by the executive member for finance and resources comments at the last meeting, which attempted to suggest that my words in the question that day were somehow intemperate or insulting. I spoke to my experience of property services processes and decision-making over the last few years and the failings of that department, exemplified by the extraordinary failure to maintain vital council assets to the tune of over £200 million and the extraordinary disarray around certain decisions on the disposal of heritage properties. I'd like to invite the member to apologise for their remarks. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Mr Slack, much appreciated. I've got councillor McDonald. Kate.
Thank you Chair and thank you for the questions. I'm going to answer the questions on the corporate asset management plan. I'm just, there has been a bit of confusion, so if there's any that get missed out, we can provide a written response. So I am going to answer the questions on the corporate asset management plan and my colleague councillor Johnson's going to answer the question on the 10-point plan, but I'm not sure we've got the other bits covered by these because they only come in at fairly short notice. So apologise if some of your questions, bits of your questions have been missed, Mr Slack. Okay, corporate asset management plan provides a high-level overview of what the council will use its estate for and the principles for decision-making. It will be owned and delivered by the council. It is not a plan for property services, neither is it intended that the plan provides a detailed overview of all the assets in the council's estate. Detailed information about the council's estate is held on asset management and GIS systems. The corporate accounts set out the value of the council's assets. The plan will be underpinned by a more detailed suite of policies, as we've said and as you've referenced, and these procedures will set out how the decisions will be made about the council's estate, including disposal of council assets alongside other issues of estate management. These policies will be brought forward over the next 12 months. Decisions are not made by officers in the property services. Decisions are taken in line with the council's constitution and leaders' scheme of delegation. All decisions about disposals are undertaken in line with the council's current disposal policy. As a council, we are committed to inclusive decision-making and will be exploring with local area committees how best local people can input into the decisions the council makes, including the disposal of some of our properties. Assets, I should have said, not properties. Heritage assets, obviously I understand that you're very concerned about them, as we all are. So the council recognises the importance of heritage assets in its care and the contribution they have and continue to make to the city. However, it's not the purpose of this plan to provide a detailed overview of the heritage assets the council owns or how they will be managed. However, the heritage value of all assets is considered in decision-making process alongside other matters to ensure that their future can be secured for generations to come. So I hope that responds to, I know these are some of them, we've put a couple of, taken a couple of your questions together, but some of those were themes, Mr Slack, so I hope you feel that we've addressed most of those. Thank you very much for those questions.
Thank you Kate. Douglas.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting to answer anything. I was informed that council would not wish to answer all those as they all relate to the land and property plan. But I think you asked something about the climate change aspect in terms of asking about what external organisations the council's been talking to. And actually, a simple answer is loads all over the place. There've been lots of different people talking to lots of different other people and that's as it should be. So I mean, I know for instance, within the new sustainability team, they've been using their links to, you know, drawing ideas, lots of ways to put into the 10-point plan that's just recently been published. From my own point of view, I mean, I've been talking to reps from the other South Yorkshire authorities and the Environment Agency today, but also been talking to, you know, like local businesses in Kellam Island, for instance, about their contribution towards tackling climate change. But right throughout the council, there are lots of officers that I don't know, who will be talking to lots of other people in external organisations, because about climate change, it's not a single department's job. It's about things that people will do, hopefully with increasing frequency throughout the council to embed the whole climate change crisis into what everyone is doing on a day-to-day basis. So yeah, there is a lot to draw on there. You had something else about making developers pay. I'm not sure what to say about that really, apart from the fact that it's going to be something that's going to be addressed in the local plan, about balancing the role of developers against the public. So I hope that helps. I was wondering if it might be helpful if putting, you know, written answers, preparing them, which it probably is sensible with big schedule of questions there, whether we just get those on the website and so they're just there as a record.
Thanks councillor Johnson. Thanks Mr Slack. If we haven't answered any of those questions, please let us know and we'll get them in writing for you. Thanks ever so much. Thank you. Thanks for your time today and safe journey. The next item is item seven, items calling for scrutiny, if we, any, none, not all. The next item is item eight, which is page 29 of the agenda, which is the reach end of the school kitchen. Are we waiting for the officer to present?
Is that me? Hello, I'm Leah Barrett from the People's Portfolio.
Take a minute, two seconds. Right, thanks for coming today. Can you just kind of introduce yourselves and then report? Thanks.
Certainly. I'm Leah Barrett, the service manager for the school food service and I work in the People's Portfolio of Education and Skills. We manage the large contract that the council broke us for schools in terms of the catering contract. This contract that I'm presenting today is the one that we actually manage ourselves, which is the kitchen maintenance. So that is very important for schools to have the whole kitchen environment looked after so that the contractors can fulfil their statutory duties that the schools sort of pass to them and we keep everybody safe.
Thank you very much. Thanks Leah for coming today. Is there any questions for Leah? It's quite straightforward. Paul?
Thank you Chair. Hi Leah.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of short questions. Well, I was going to ask you about why the service contract was not tied in with the food provision contract and then I realised that there's actually a section on the report which says that it was done like that in the past and it was a big mistake or that words similar to that. And I wasn't sure how to take that, whether like, oh well, this is good because the council's taking responsibility or this is bad because we've entered into a multi-million pound contract with somebody we don't trust to maintain the equipment.
Well, it's not their skill set and what they would do is, if they did include it, they would subcontract it and they would then affect the meal price because they would have to price for it. And it is the one area where, in the whole of it, you can make some savings if you want to. If you don't want to buy enough equipment, if you want your staff to struggle with less than you, is ideal. If you want to delay repairing that dishwasher because it's leaking and you think you can limp along for another six months, there's some health and safety concerns in there. So it's one of those areas that we did test out when it first went out to the market and it was just a disaster really. And we spent, as I put in the report, a good couple of years sort of trying to claw it back. It's not where head teachers want to be. They want to know that the premise that they're inviting guests into is managed properly and that there are no accidents. They want to make sure that everything is done according to the legal requirements. Kitchens are dangerous places if they're not managed properly. So that was really one of the things that we learnt from that very first contract that was outsourced is you really need the right people to do the right job. And so catering, concentrate on food and staff and service and maintenance, skilled engineers concentrate on the gas and the electric and the ventilation systems.
Okay, thanks. Can you tell me, is the cost split equally between the 91 schools?
How we work it with schools, we have a subscription charge, which we tell schools every year what that's going to be. Part of the buyback arrangement that schools wanted was, they didn't want costs arriving to them through the year. They wanted to know at the beginning of the budget year what their outlay would be so they could budget properly. And the way that formulas have changed over the years from when we first set it up with head teachers is that we have, we charge schools equally in terms of the metre square of their kitchen areas. So every school chips in, in the same method. If you've got a big kitchen, then you'll pay more. You'll probably have more equipment and if you've got a small kitchen, then obviously the charge is less. But the service across has to be equal. If they need, if they need something doing, no matter what it is, they need to have it done. So that's really the way that we've worked with schools to develop that formula.
Okay, and I guess it guarantees then, so if one school, if all of their equipment randomly breaks down, it's all replaced at no extra cost then?
That's the way we do it and I think that's, the head teachers prefer that. They know that it's being dealt with quickly and they know that they don't have to suddenly find £15,000 for a dishwasher like I've had to commission this morning for a school where one's gone down and we've got to replace it.
Right, gosh, okay. There was one more thing I wanted to ask you, which was, let me find it, page 33. There's a, there's a line in section 2.1 that says, how does this decision contribute? It's in line with its aims to support the health and wellbeing of children and families, okay? And to promote a vibrant, sustainable and strong economy. And I just, I just couldn't quite equate that with what the actual contract is and particularly as the school dinner contract is with a foreign multinational. I just wondered if that was a line that, I just, I don't know.
I think it's because they're all local employees. They all live in the area that they work and that's where they recruit from. That's how the catering contractor does that. I'm not entirely sure where the engineers live or operate this contract, but they have got dedicated engineers to this Sheffield contract because of the size of it.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Cheers Leah. Thanks Chair.
Thank you Paul. Any questions? If not, comments? Councillor Dunn?
Thank you and thank you Leah and thank you for all the work that you've done on this report and the other and especially making sure that we keep everything as local as we can, do you know? And I really like the social value that you've put in to when we're going to be going out because it's really important to me that we're really kind of encouraging and helping, do you know, get a lot of our young people, get some experience and everything else. But thank you so much for the hard work you've done and it's really appreciated. Short and sweet, that's what we like. Yeah, and it's great that, especially with all the pressures that schools are under right now, that this contract means that schools aren't faced by an awful kind of sudden bill, which is just, because they're all absolutely underfunded. So this gives them that reassurance. So thank you. Well done to you and the team.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks councillor Dunn. Thanks Leah. If there's no more comments, I'd just like to say thank you Leah for presenting the report, for the work that the team's doing and also for keeping it as local as we possibly can and obviously putting Sheffield first. Can I ask colleagues, there's a number of recommendations on page 30. Can we agree those? Agreed? Thank you very much. Thanks ever so much. Thanks Leah. Can we have the next officer please for item nine, secondary mainstream school expansions? Thanks Nicola. Thanks for coming. Can you just kind of introduce yourself and then the report? Thanks.
I can, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Nicola Shearston. I'm head of commissioning for prevention and early health services in the People's Portfolio. Just to present the report and just give some summary of the report. As I'm sure people are aware, as a local authority, we do have a statutory duty under the Education Act to make sure that we provide sufficient school places for children that live in the city. If we look at our birth rates over the last decade or so, we have seen about a 25% increase in the number of births in the city between 2002 and 2012. And what we're now seeing is those children moving into our secondary school provision. That's pacing a lot of pressure on our secondary schools and we're forecasting a deficit of places in our secondary schools with a particular peak around year 23/24 academic intake. We've got a particular pressure, it's not seen citywide, the particular pressure is in the south-west of the city. So although we have a deficit in 23/24 citywide, that pressure remains in the south-west of the city for at least a decade when we look at our forecasting figures. South west schools have already accommodated some of the pressure that we're seeing from the birth rates and already reached their maximum capacity for accommodating children's school places. We've already developed some new schools in the area, so we've got, for example, the Mercia School that's been developed. But again, that's not really meeting the demand that we're seeing in the city. We're trying to balance this demand for places and our lack of places in the city for 23/24 with the need to maintain school sustainability. So we recognise as well that we need to, where we can, develop temporary provision, but because of this longstanding surplus place, deficit of places, sorry, in the south-west, we need to have some permanent expansions in that area. So we're looking towards a hybrid approach, as we're calling it, where we have some small permanent expansions and then we look for some temporary expansions across the city where we're needed to manage the demand. We are anticipating in 23/24 that we will have a deficit of places in the south-west of around 100 to 120 places and that's what the small permanent expansions that we're looking and exploring in the south-west will reflect. We've been in discussions with DFE around this and they have allocated us some basic need allocation. It's a complex pot of funding, but basically, basic need allocation is an annual allocation of funding. So this is not new funding coming to the city. It's an adjustment of our future allocations that we would receive and we've needed to take that into account when we're looking at how we might manage the pressure on school places going forward in the future. We also, just to note, and you'll see in the report, we also have pressure, not just within our mainstream schools, but within our SEN schools and our special schools in the city. And as part of this progress and as And as part of this progress and as part of looking at our future years, we're also looking at how we manage that pressure within our SEN provision in the city as well. The report is particularly focused on the capital allocation and what we're asking for the support from Sheffield City Council. The reason for that is that the council gets, as I've just said, an annual allocation of basic need funding from the government. We've used some of that in the past to build new schools, for example, Mercia and Astraea. And we've had to cash flow some of that going forward, partly because the government allocation doesn't really meet the cost that it takes to develop school places in the city. If we then add these potential new expansions into that capital part, it means that we do need some support from Sheffield City Council to be able to commit to developing school places. And you'll see in the report, that's a breakdown of the costing means that we're looking for around up to one point five million pounds support from Sheffield City Council's corporate fund. What we're also committing to do is looking to sell some of the vacant caretaker houses that we have in the city. There are some named in the report and then there are others that we are also exploring whether they're potential for sale. And we hope that that could bring in around three quarters of a million pound back to reimburse some of that corporate commitment. So effectively, we're asking for approval for up to one point five million to support the development of school places and particularly secondary school places in the city. Some delegated authority to be able to look at the sale of the caretaker houses. And just to really note as well that any approval for specific schemes will go through the normal capital approval process. So this report is not asking for approval at this stage for any specific scheme. Thank you.
Thanks Nicola, thanks ever so much. Any questions? Douglas?
Thanks for the report there. I just want to check, it's, so the focus is on the expanding Silverdale and King Edwards, isn't it? It's the main thing, that is right, isn't it?
So the focus is looking at south west of the city and their two schools that we're in discussions with. I think it's important to say that we've not reached any conclusion on those yet. And they're the ones that would come through the usual capital approval process if we want to proceed.
Okay, that's helpful. I mean, appreciate that the pressure is in the south west, isn't it? The question's really about the idea about the basic need grant comes from government. Is the intention that government meets the capital cost of providing those school places? And we're looking at a shortfall here because it doesn't, but is the intention that government meets that?
Yeah, so the government allocate basic need allocation funding, which is the intention behind it, is to meet the need of developing school places. They allocate that on a per pupil basis, as in per place basis. I think the allocation to Sheffield is around sixteen thousand pound per place for build, but obviously the costs of the build are much greater than that. And that's where we end up with a deficit in that the costs aren't actually covering the places. But when the allocation that we receive is based on a number of places that they expect us to develop in the city.
Okay. The following question, that is whether there's, whether there's an explanation from government as to why they're not prepared to meet the cost? Have we asked that question?
We have asked.
If you possibly push them for the extra one and a half million, then I'd like to know we're doing that.
That's a fair question and we have asked that question and we have raised that the costs don't meet our requirement. There's a different allocation per local authority. And Sheffield gets sixteen thousand, but that's not one of the top allocations, that's one of the lower figures of allocation. I have to say, I don't quite understand how they calculate their formula, but it has been raised, obviously, that we have, they're very aware that we are looking for corporate contribution to support our school places.
Okay. And I don't have a problem with that, it's just I'd like to know that we've got, I may follow up for you, that's very helpful. Just, how many caretaker's houses we're looking at selling?
So we've got three at the moment that were named in the report that are vacant properties. And I think there's probably another three that we are looking at at the moment.
Okay, yeah, thanks. And the last question I've got is, just thinking about the pressure on the south west and schools there. It's the line, it's paragraph four point one point one, but the important line there is that it says it's the inner city areas are furthest away from the south west schools. Therefore insufficient places at south west schools would mean inner city children will be the first to miss out. And I suppose that's where I'm concerned about, because actually, because I cover city ward. And for children there, they might be easiest to get to the schools down at, say, King Edwards, because there's a direct bus route and they often get allocated places that are direct as the crow flies, but much, much harder to get to. And I'm really asking the question whether we should, whether it's time to reconsider the allocation policy of direct distance as the tiebreaker because of that, the contribution towards inequality that it inevitably generates, which is referred to here.
So you're right in raising that. The way that our school boundaries and allocations work is that the, so if you take south west of the city, the schools are based in the predominantly affluent element of their geographical boundary for allocation. And the boundaries are in a wedge, so they come towards the city centre. So if we're looking at allocation, you're right, if we don't have enough school places, it's the children that live furthest away from the school that end up not receiving a place in those schools and the children that live nearer the school. I think we've looked at a number of options, at how we can manage this differently. We've also looked at the way, could we relook at our boundaries around the schools? Could we reconfigure that as well? But it's an extremely complex and long term piece of work. So I think our concern would be that any changes wouldn't necessarily be something we could bring in to manage this demand that we will see in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thanks Douglas, I've got George then, Jean.
Thank you, Chair. My question was actually ended up being asked by Douglas, thank you.
Thank you George, Jean.
Yeah, thank you. It was more of a summary, I wanted to come, I wanted to get in before Douglas, but I didn't, never mind. I just want to thank you Nicola, but actually to say regarding the capital and the major underinvestment by the government in our schools, so-called levelling up, I have written to and it is well documented for exactly the reasons as councillor Douglas actually mentioned. And again, we have looked at the, the boundaries and how that, addressing inequality on that. And it isn't easy at all, as Nicola will say, that's one of the first things we said. I'm really pleased to see that we've got the possibility of sixth form send because that's one of the things that all the parents that I've been speaking to are really, really desperate for. And it will certainly go a long way into helping us address that. So regarding the caretaker houses, anyone is considered, will have been looked at to see if we can use it as an alternative provision. So, you know, kind of, just want to reassure COP executive that we are looking at absolutely everything. And just to say as well, that at the same time as the schools approached us, they also wrote to the DFE. So there's rather a complex way about this goes. Unfortunately, due to the legislation with government, we don't have an awful lot of control. But what we are passionate about as a COP executive is making sure that every child gets access to really good education. And I'm really, really pleased and really hope that this goes through. I want to thank you Nicola for all your hard work and just to say, so lovely to see you in person because we're on a Zoom nearly every other day. Okay, well, thank you so much to you and the team because it's been a really, yeah, thank you.
Thanks Jean. And thanks Nicola, we've got a number of recommendations in front of us. And it's to, one of them is to approve the use of the one and a half million. Sorry? Okay, sorry, sorry Kate.
I'd wanted to thank you for the report as well because I know we've worked together on this as well because of the impact on the corporate budgets. I just think it's ironic that Sheffield is, councils are expected to pick up the full costs of the provision of education, but the government doesn't allow us to manage our schools. So we've worked very carefully on this together and worked very closely with the schools and we will continue to do so. But it's an outrage that the government does not fully fund the cost of providing schools. Thank you.
Thanks Kate, and thanks for that stark reminder, and I want to expect Nicola to answer that, that we, all the executive echo Kate's comments there about, about the public money going to, not allowing us to run our own schools. But with that in mind, can we agree those recommendations? Thank you, thanks ever so much, thank you Nicola. We now go to item ten, capital approvals, I believe it's Damian will be presenting. Welcome Damian, if you can just introduce yourself and then item ten please, thanks.
Hi, I'm Damian Mockinson, I'm the finance manager in the capital team. I'm bringing forward the monthly variations and additions to the capital programme that are detailed in appendix one of the report. Getting, trying to get approval for the variations to the budget and the, any associated procurement routes and to delegate the contract awards. Also this month is just to note, some grant funding that's been received without specific terms and conditions, but just noting that we've received it. So I'll just quickly go through some of the key elements in the approvals. Under transport, we've got the first stages of two active travel funded schemes. So they're active travel neighbourhoods and Sheep Valley cycling route. So they're funded from the active travel fund coming from Sheffield City Region. Trying to develop an active travel neighbourhood, so that's looking at street configurations etcetera in Netheredge and Crooks. And the first stage of a Sheep Valley cycle route, so that's to get those delivered. In the green open spaces area, we've got work package two coming forward on the Parkwood Springs. So last month we had the mountain biking trails come forward. This month it's the community hub, kiosk and toilets that are being brought forward for approval and they're funded from some historic Department of Health money that was associated with Excellence in Sports and Medicine. Under housing, we're bringing forward some additional funding required because of ground conditions and security concerns at Daresbury View site where we're building new council housing. So we've got difficult ground conditions and there's been some antisocial behaviours, so that needs an increase in budget there of around a hundred and twenty thousand. Also under housing, we've got tower block fire safety. So it's looking at, we're working through the fire safety in all our tower blocks. Phase one's been done, which was the cladding at Hanover. We've had another phase which has looked at Stanington. This is the third phase where we're going, the remainder of the twenty blocks to assess the current situation and make the recommendations about what's going to be needed to press on and, and increase fire safety in all those tower blocks. Under schools, we're spending approximately three point four million, but it's an increase of approximately two, I think, on an additional, on an additional SEND places at Talbot School. So this links into the previous item, actually, that Nicola was discussing. Again, we're having to pump prime this with some of our own funds in order to be able to deliver those places while we're waiting for hopefully allocations from central government to catch up on that. But yeah, links into the previous item. And then as far as the corporate estate is concerned, we're looking at spending one point six million on our next ten sites that need fire risk assessment works undertaking. There, there's repairs that are required at Millhouses Park, the wall, walling there. And upgrading the CCTV here at the town hall, relocating it and upgrading it in order to be able, in order for it to operate more successfully. And then we have also actually under that, essential compliance in the corporate estate area, we've got slippage on the acquisition of our next round of vehicles. So the, the electric vehicles, Covid delays etcetera. And making it really difficult to source electric vehicles at the moment. So unfortunately, two point three million of that spend on those vehicles is having to slip into next year because we're having to, you know, looking at the due diligence on what we can get, when we can get it. But yes, the supply chain's really difficult in that area. And then yes, the grant that we're looking to note, just to note is, it's advanced on the Stockbridge Towns Fund. It's approximately one point two million. Initially, we, we were, we believed we were going to have to cash flow the development work on Stockbridge Towns Fund ourselves. But government has allowed early release of one point two million pounds and no specific conditions attached to it. So we don't, there's nothing to approve and it was just paid to us. But it's just to note that we've received that and we'll be utilising that for the development of those schemes. And yeah, that's key points, thank you.
Thanks Damian, any questions to Damian? Douglas?
Thanks, yeah, just a couple of quick ones, I mean, you know, a good package of things there, so that's, that's all good. Just want to pick up on the, on the Sheep Valley scheme, it's described as an emergency traffic regulation order. I just wonder if you can check later on, I think it's meant to be an experimental one. It is an important point because actually that is genuinely meant to be an experimental thing to see what happens. So it's probably better to correct it now before that hair starts running all the way down to wood seats. On, I've got a question on, on the Daresbury view thing, that's actually really interesting because it's actually put a cost on the antisocial behaviour that people experiencing up there. I think it's, it's caused a cost of a hundred and twenty thousand, doesn't it? It's in, yeah, the Daresbury, that's the cost of the measures that are being brought in to deal with that. Do you have any details of what that antisocial behaviour is? I mean, you may not, but, but do you?
No, I'm afraid I don't have details on it, but I know the project manager can certainly get you some information.
Okay, I just thought it is interesting because it actually quantifies, you know, what someone is costing the council and thereby, you know, every member of the public here. So, okay, I mean, maybe if you could come back with that, that would be great. And I want just on the fire safety, I think, I just noticed that Spring Street kennels, so those, so it's actually on page sixty-seven of the pack, Damian, if you want to. Point is, it's saying that we're spending nearly two hundred thousand pounds on fire risk assessments of the Spring Street kennels. As I understand it, there's, we have these kennels here, we used to house lots of dogs. We've now only got three dogs, being supported by the council, they're now sort of lost dogs team. I mean, are we really spending this amount of money on three dogs?
Well, what I can say is that we, when we get the business cases through for these, we do go back and just double check with the, with the TNFM team that these are buildings that we are looking to keep. Now, whether they're going to continue in the current use or not, I'm not sure. It just, it's, this is the word that's told, we need to bring these back to compliance and we're just double checking that we do, we do double check that we do need these buildings and, you know, that is the right thing to do. So, and that's, that's come back that, you know, we are intending to maintain this building and that's the current estimated cost of, of, of the works that are required.
Okay, all right.
But I can, again, I can ask, I can get some more detail on, on the future of that building, you know, from, from colleagues.
That'll be helpful, yeah, thank you.
If I may, Douglas, I can bring Mick in just to answer that point, Mick?
I'll take that point away because the Spring, Spring Street kennels is, is a facility that we are keeping under review because of its conditions and because of the demand that the service has got. So before we approve that, I'll take that away.
Thanks, that's actually very helpful to know.
Thanks Douglas. Questions, Paul?
Really just a bit of information for Douglas on Daresbury. It was a number of items, Douglas. It was people going into the site, damaging the building work that was going on, theft from the side. And generally causing a general nuisance. And it got to quite a serious level on stage and it's had to be fenced over quite a large area. Hopefully that explains a little bit.
Thanks, thanks Paul. If I can just come back my, I think that's actually very helpful to know, Paul, from your personal knowledge there. I mean, I think it's actually quite shocking just how much, how much cost there is resulting to everyone else from the actions of few individuals, thanks.
Thanks Douglas. If there's no more questions or comments, if not, I'd like to make just a couple of questions if I can. Damian, one is, you, you mentioned to me, he's preicked up at Parkwood Springs, as a user of that. You talked about community space and toilets. Is that, is that now programmed in? Just as a councillor, we get asked if we provide toilets on some of our facilities. So it's nice to know we are investing so, so many. The other question is, is around the SND at Talbot and at Manor Lodge with the expansion of places. You said there was a rearrangement of, of money there, did you say that there's extra money being ploughed in?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, this is corporate funding that's going in, there had been a provision, no- notably for sort of expansion of school places generally. Nicola spoke about the amount that's required for the general school places, and that's actually due to the hard work they've done and the work on selling some of those, looking to sell some of the council, sort of the caretakers' houses, meant that there was some more available to go towards this S E N D scheme. Yeah, so it is the council that's bringing that forward at this point, yeah, and we're waiting for new allocations to be announced from central government for special needs. Now, we know in the budget, they did announce quite a large overall figure, but we're still waiting to see what that will mean for Sheffield. But in the meantime, we've just had to push on to deliver some places.
Well, thanks for that, obviously, Manor Lodge being in my worry. It's just great to see the investment that's going in from the city to S E N Ds when we know the issues that we're facing and the large capacity that we're having to deal with. So to get that investment into those areas is... The other issue I'd like to say is the variety that this co-op executive is going to take through today. So we've got the Netheredge, Crooks and Sheaf Valley active travel package that we're taking through, the investment in schools, the investment in our community safety, which is one of the key planks that this cooperative executive signed up to. So it's nice, even though I know the effect on residents is horrendous, but it just shows that we're putting our money where our mouth is on this cooperative executive. Council Dunn, did you just want to come in?
I did, but councillor Fox, you read my mind with what you were going to say. I just, you know, I just want to thank you for that and just to say that we are waiting for the settlement from government for the fine detail, and I have a letter ready to send in, so you'd better be ready. But just to put some meat on the bones, we are, we think approximately £30 million is needed investment over the next five years to reach this provision, and that has got to come, as councillor McDonald so eloquently said earlier, from government, but we're on it. We're fighting for every single family and every single child. But it's great to see what we're doing in here today. We're showing our commitments, about time they matched it. But thanks.
Thanks Jane. We've got a series of recommendations for these capital approvals and investments. Can we agree those? I know Mick Cross says he's going to get a detail on it regarding the spring date. But with those, can we agree? Thank you. Anybody against? No? Thank you very much. Thanks for that Damian, much appreciated. We now go on to item 11, the Gambling Act. Hi, is it Shimla? I'll let you introduce yourself and the report, Shimla. Thanks ever so much.
Hello, thank you. My name's Shimla Finch, I'm a policy officer for the Licensing Service and the Place Portfolio, and I've led the review of the gambling policy, and I'm just going to give a brief of the report. So the report sets out the details of revised statement of principles, which is our gambling policy, and the details of the consultation that has been undertaken. It seeks approval of the final version of the policy and for it to refer to full council. First part of the report details the background of why we need the policy and the review, and explains the gambling regulatory framework, in particular the role of the Gambling Commission. They deal with gambling on a national level and issue certain types of licences, and our role as a council to deal with gambling in our local authority area, which involves a setting our local framework for gambling through our policy, considering applications and issuing licences and permits, reviewing and revoking licences, and undertaking inspections and enforcement activities. We use this policy to assist us in making decisions where we must aim to permit the use of gambling premises so long as they are in accordance with the Gambling Commission's Code of Practice, guidance that's issued to local authorities, that is within the scope of our licensing policy, and that they're reasonably consistent with the licensing objectives. We have a legal duty to publish a gambling policy every three years, and we're now in the review period to make sure it's published and effective by January 2022. The policy itself has been produced in accordance with the gambling regulations, so this details what must be actually placed in the policy document itself. The policy deals with all land-based gambling, so casinos, betting shops, bingo halls and machines in pubs and clubs, and we want to provide clear guidance to all those who may need to use it. So there'll be licensing, authority officers in protesting applications to guide businesses when making applications in Sheffield, officers and councillors when making decisions, to ensure that relevant views of those affected by licensing premises are taken into consideration, ensures local area issues are taken into account by local risk assessments which operators most carry out in the local area which they're applying, and to support wider strategies initiatives of the council. This is part three of the policy document, and we've tried to link it through all the policy sections in the document. So as part of the review, we have to have a public consultation, and the legislation also tells us who we need to consult with. We've consulted widely, but before we went to the formal consultation, we did a pre-consultation with Sheffield Children's Safeguard and Partnership and with Public Health to ensure that a document was up to date as possible. The formal consultation concluded at the end of August and we received four responses. So Appendix A of the report details a summary of the responses and whether or not we've amended the policy with an explanation to it. Any changes have been made following legal advice and special advice from relevant partners, and most changes have been minor. Once we have revised the policy, what we want is to ensure that we've met our statutory obligations under the Act, to have a well-regulated gambling sector in the city, to be clear on the city's approach to gambling, and to ensure that city strategies and plans are integrated throughout it, and that we protect children and other vulnerable persons from being harmed or exploited by gambling. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions, Paul?
Thank you very much Chair. Hello. I wanted to ask, I'm just having a look through where the appendix that lists the changes, and there's one in part three saying the Sheffield Alcohol Strategy, Sheffield Alcohol Strategy, I haven't had any honest, 2016 to 2020, removed as no longer effective and no updated strategy in place? I'm thinking that this is possibly quite a dangerous thing to not have in there. And I guess, you know, we all know alcohol impairs the judgement and it flows freely in casinos where people can be placing large bets very, you know, within minutes of each of them. And so I just wondered what, I mean, I'm concerned, but I'm not an expert in this policy, so I just wondered if you could allay my fears or direct us to what we could do to, you know, to address that potential problem. Thank you.
Yeah, this particular strategy was out of date, so I think there is a revision going on. So I think we can probably put something in for the updated version to be linked through it. So I could put something in there, but this one in particular was taken out because it is out of date.
So will that, would you be able to update that if it's ready? I didn't know that it was, was ongoing, but you know, will you have to wait? It's every three years this is renewed, isn't it? So will it have to wait till then or can it be put in as soon as it's ready?
I'll have a word with who deals with this strategy and see at what place they are and when they are ready for it to be published. I think that's all I can do at the moment. So if it can be in time before ours can be published, I can add that on.
So sorry to press, but just on that topic then, can you explain what safeguards are in place to stop people who are drunk from gambling their life savings?
Yeah, that will be part of the Licensing Act policy as well as this one. So throughout this document, the output in part of the processes is ensuring that they have the right policies and procedures in place. So they would have to, when they apply to us, that would be part of their policy, and we would review that as part of it and see if that is up to date and it is relevant.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks Paul. Anyone, George and then Kate?
Thank you Chair. Very briefly, just a very brief question, I'm sorry I'm impatient I'm saying, just on the section, in terms of, I think it's an appendix where the consultation comments were received. Just to breathe, on your opinion of, on the consultation, one of the four consultation comments received is from the Betting and Gambling Council. It does appear that most of their comments appear to be requesting to tone down some of the languages in no doubt the original draft of the report. Would you therefore agree that they are, as it says here, a standards body committed to championing safer gambling? Would you see that as an accurate representation of what the Betting and Gaming Council is? Thank you. Thank you for the report though, it was excellent.
Thank you. I don't know how to answer that question, that's how they've explained themselves on their webpages. So I wanted to be able to put down how they've explained what their body is. So it's not my wording, it's a wording that they've used.
Thanks George. Kate?
Thank you and thank you for the report, and I'm glad that somebody's on top of all the technical matters associated with it because it's not my area of expertise. I wanted to ask one of the areas of concern for me, and has been discussed in the past, is the concentration of betting shops in poorer areas in quite close proximity. I remember there was discussion about limiting the numbers that could be located within a precinct and so on. Can you just explain to me how that actually, how we can control that within this policy? Thank you.
Okay, so every application is treated on its own individual merits and we have to aim to permit as long as they meet certain criteria. So there has been, and there has previously been, an issue around clustering, and I think that was just nationwide. There have been changes in the planning regime around betting shops. So if there are any new applications for betting shops, they now have to go through a planning process. So more than generally, they would go through planning before they come to us to apply for a betting shop. So that's how they've tried to alleviate the clustering. And there's been changes in the fixed odd betting terminals in betting shops where the stakes and prizes have been reduced dramatically, and we've seen a change in the amount of betting shops that there have been. There's just been a reduction in them because of the changes in the legislation.
Can I just come back on this please? I mean, it's obviously, you know, an issue of great concern to those of us who have areas where there's more than one betting shop within an area with low income and so on. The planning regulations would only apply if it was change of use though, wouldn't it, in terms of a shop, if it's already been used as a shop? And so I suppose my follow-up question is, do you actually feel that we have sufficient controls on clustering at the moment? And is, or is this something that we ought to be looking at in terms of what more we could do about it? Thank you.
Yes, so there's the planning controls, and quite rightly say it's on new applications that they have to have. But what changed with the previous review of this policy was the Code of Practice, which the Gambling Commission issued, there was changes in that for all operators where they have to have local risk assessment. So if you're applying or if there's changes in the area, or if you wanted to make any changes on your current licences, they have to submit a local risk assessment, and that has to be submitted within the application to us. So all them kinds of risks, and that's specified in the policy document itself about where it's situated, is it near any sensitive locations or buildings that we perceive as sensitive, what risks there are and how they intend to mitigate it. So that would be part of their application to us and we would review that and assist if they can provide extra control measures to reduce any risks. Thank you for that.
Thanks Kate. Douglas?
Thanks. I was going to say, I do share councillor McDonald's concerns about that, but just on the areas nearing stress, you've identified that, I think, unless specifically being taken out of this policy as being areas where there's recognised that cumulative effects there. Do you know where they are, the ones where in the previous policy have been taken out of this one?
They have been taken out. I haven't got the previous policy on, I don't remember. I think it was Broome Hill, Darnall, Hillsborough. So there is an explanation of why we have taken it out, so it has been a challenge on it, and we don't have the information or evidence to back putting anything else in there or to keep what we have. So I think it's because of the pandemic and everything's been short, it's been hard to get any kind of information. So we'll hold that out and then we'll keep a review of any areas or any issues. So we've done this in consultation with South Yorkshire Police, with Public Health, with Safeguarding Children about any information that we have currently or anything that we can use, and we just don't at the moment. So that is something that we were going to keep an eye out, and if at any point we do need to have our own local profile, area profile, if a specific area does become a problematic area.
Okay. Okay, if no more questions or comments, we are recommended to refer this up to full council. All those in favour? Agreed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks Shimla, thank you. We now move on to the last item, Item 12, Leisure and Entertainment Services Review. I will wait for officers to come.
Chair, apologies, I should have mentioned that I'm an observer on the Sheffield City Trust Board. There's no conflict of interest because I'm only an observer appointed by the council, but just for the sake of transparency, I felt it, I feel it's better just to mention that. Thank you.
Thanks Kate. Just while we're waiting, can I ask members if they want to raise issues on the appendix on the back, if you can highlight that first and then we can kind of cut the broadcast off. Is there any questions to be asked on the appendix? No? Councillor Johnson, councillor Turplin, will you be asking questions on the appendix at the back, just so that if we're aware, we can cut the...
I think I can.
Okay. Okay, well, if we do then, if we need to turn the recording off, just identify. Okay. Well, thanks. Thanks ever so much. We're on item 12. We saved the best till last year, so we've got obviously three officers, Lisa, Tammy and Ryan. If, when you speak for the first time, if you can just introduce yourselves, we'd much appreciate it, and take us through the agenda item 12. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Lisa Firth, I'm the Director of Culture. We've come to take you through the report for the Leisure and Entertainment Services Review today. I've brought colleagues with me, they'll introduce themselves. The report really explains that we've got a once-in-a-lifetime, once-in-a-generation opportunity to look at what we need from the city's sports and leisure facilities, both now and in the future, and design more efficient, more impactful solutions for our communities, to make them more active, healthier and to stay healthy for longer. We've got ambitious plans which are outlined in this report to maximise the benefits of our leisure and entertainment services for residents, and to recognise the contribution towards the wider objectives of the council and the city, such as reducing the burden on the NHS and social care, and lowering levels of obesity. such as reducing the burden on the NHS and social care and lowering levels of obesity and cutting carbon emissions. So it's known that Sheffield City Trust currently run most of the council's leisure facilities and entertainment facilities. And some of these arrangements come to an end in 2024. And so in response to that ending in 2024, in 2019, we commissioned a consultancy to work with us as officers to undertake what we call a leisure and facility investment review. And this examined the ways in which the city's leisure, entertainment and events facilities and services could be redeveloped to become as close to self-funding as possible through investment and service transformation and how the facilities can be managed beyond 2024. In order to understand the long-term financial implications, we've developed a 30-year financial model. And we looked at three options for the management of those facilities. And that was an in-house model, setting up a local authority trading company and also procuring externally for an external partner to run the facilities. And that's also alongside a significant over £100 million with investment in the facilities to rebuild them where we, where we think that is the most beneficial option and to redevelop them as well. That 30-year model has shown us that the only affordable option for the council is to appoint an external operator to run the facilities because that gives us the most in terms of the return on investment and the ability to invest more. So if we've got an external operator that can generate more income, then we can invest more in the facilities. The list of the facilities is on page 164 of the report. The three facilities that are due to come back to the council in 2024 are the Arena, Ponsforge International Sports Centre and Hillsborough Leisure Centre. But we've considered options for all the council's estate within the report. So what we're asking Corp Exec to do today is to approve our recommendation of appointing an external partner to operate the facilities, to approve our recommendation for the significant investment in the facilities and also to approve our approach to a large-scale public consultation about what our residents and communities want to see and how we can encourage them to use the facilities once, once we've invested in them and reopened them. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thanks, Lisa. Questions? Kate?
Thank you for the report. I think this is great news and well done for all the hard work that's taken place over a period of time. I'd like to pay tribute to one of my colleagues as well, who's not here today. And that's councillor Mary Lee, because I know she's been involved in it as well. So thank you. I have a couple of questions. My first question is actually about external funding and whether or not you feel that by doing this, we will become even more attractive to funders in terms of investing in our sporting facilities. I've got another couple, but let's just let Lisa and others respond to that one, please.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Tammy to answer that one.
My name's Tammy Barris, I'm Head of Sport, Leisure and Health at the council. So in terms of Sport England and other external investment, we have been working with them throughout this process whilst undertaking the review and they've actually already funded some of the work that we've done to date on this. We're using their Strategic Outcomes Planning Guidance to formulate this work and conversations that we've had with them today have been really, really positive. In fact, Sheffield's actually been used as a case study within the new Strategic Outcomes Planning Guidance and the document used for Sport England. Contacts that we've had with them recently suggest that Sheffield's reputation is actually growing at the moment. It's been enhanced by the recent work that we've done. And I think also the council's own willingness to potentially invest in the sites and invest in sport and leisure is really significant, not just for Sport England but for other funders as well that we may be able to bring to the table. So we'll work with others such as NGBs, we've had the Lawn Tennis Association and British Tennis in the past, funding some of our projects. So I think although we've not included external income in the report, there is a good likelihood that we will be able to attract additional funding, especially with sort of the reputation of Sheffield at the moment and our ambition and plans around this.
So we've modelled it on a worst-case scenario over the 30 years. Our financial assumptions have assumed no other external funding, so we can work on the worst-case scenario. But actually, as Tammy's just explained, we're really confident that we will be attracting external funding to support this.
I've got another couple of questions, please, if you don't mind. First of all, to be honest, I think going for an external provider, private sector provider would probably not have been top of my list of priorities. And, and obviously we've had to compromise because of the, our financial situation. And we're not making a decision today about procurement. But can you give me reassurances that we would be able to, through the procurement process, exercise some choice and control over the sorts of operators that we will be doing business with? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Through the procurement process, we can design a service specification, which we, which we have done previously, actually, which Tammy can explore a little bit more if that would be helpful. But we can, we can specify even down to appointing a voluntary organisation or a social enterprise, a community interest corporation to run the facilities. By, when we describe an external partner, that doesn't mean necessarily a private sector operator. It means someone external to the council and we can, we can specify who that needs to be. We can also specify such things as that operator must pay, for instance, the foundation living wage. We can set specifications around pricing structures, concessions, free availability, community use and so on. So that really is down, down to us to design and we can come back and consult with you on, on how you would like to see that specification designed as well.
So just to conclude, Chair, so I'll take it from that, that we can still exercise significant control and make sure that, you know, our values actually are reflected in, in the operator that we work with in this great adventure. Thank you. Absolutely, yeah.
Thanks, Kate. Jane?
Thank you and thank you. Yeah, it's really exciting. As somebody who's really sporty, quite late in life, this is great news. I'm just building on what councillor McDonald was saying about our procurement and how we can influence it. Is there a possibility for us to do education and training within this and especially our kids with SEN? Do you know, and those that are academic? Because I think that is a really exciting opportunity and it's something that I'd really like to explore.
I'll take that one, Jane. We've already began conversations with colleagues in youth services about how we can align some of the things that they're wanting to do and achieve with our strategy. So absolutely, I think it's something that we need to work really closely together on. And I think the timing's really good as well. There, there's consultation out there around youth strategy and what we're wanting to do and what we're wanting to achieve. So I think, yeah, definitely we can get much greater alignment moving forward.
And just, sorry, just to add as well, we're looking at co-location of services as well, so kind of GP referral services, consultation services, physios and so on, all can be part of the design of the facilities once, once we get into that level of detail and start to talk to other providers as well. So bringing them all together.
May just indulge in coming back, Chair, please. Thank you. Just going to say, we've done some really good beginning work on transitions, do you know, for our children on that. So it'd be really good if you could link into that. And as well, you know, apprentice programmes, everything. I just think it's absolutely really exciting.
And just to say as well, as part of the consultation that we're doing, we're actually designing the questions. So we're asking about how we can get children that aren't active, active and how we can get children to facility, into facilities, but both indoors and outdoors as well. So, yeah, very much linking into that.
Thanks, Jane. Paul?
Cheers, Chair. Thanks for bringing this forward. In last year, when we had scrutiny committees, I sat on the Environmental, Economic, Wellbeing Committee, which we had SCT two, at least three times, we had this discussion. And, and we actually had decided as a committee to form a subcommittee to, to actually look at what I guess is this work as it was going on. And of course, that hasn't happened now. And I feel a little bit sorry about that because I felt like I was very much like, had my finger on the pulse last year and, and this is all kind of new. And, and I mean, councillor McDonald said it wouldn't have been a preferred option. I would go a little further and say, it actually makes me feel a bit nervous to procure to the private sector. And, and it's, and it's, I think it's a shame that, but basically, we were, we've been let down by the, by the, by our current management, by SCT. And, and had it not been for that, I don't think there would have been a problem with sticking with that model. And, and actually, I would probably prefer a bit more scrutiny than just voting this through. But I mean, I guess that that option's out of my hands. What I, what I would say is that, does it have to be, I've got a few short questions. So, does it have to be such a long term, 30 years? You know, we've, we've got other long-term private contracts in the council that cause problems. We don't know what, what the world's going to be like in five years, never mind 20, 25 years, yeah. Will, so the second question is, will the leisure assets be broke up? Or will, are you, are you looking to have one overarching contract? Is, is the main benefit of doing it this way that the council will no longer underwrite losses? And, and finally, what, what sort of ongoing control do we have? Because I appreciate that we might have some control when it comes to procurement. But again, you know, 30 years is a long time. And, and so, and, you know, I just think, you know, we get it with, with all, with Viola or Amy, you know, things change and there's nothing we can do about it. So what, yeah, if that's all right.
Okay, what's that?
Okay, thanks, Paul. So just, just to be really clear, an external partner does not mean a private sector operator. It just means that the council does not run the facilities themselves. So as, as I've explained, I think in councillor McDonald's question, we can specify that it is a trust, a charity, a voluntary organisation or a social enterprise. So that can be specified when we go out to procurement. We can't continue with the existing arrangements with Sheffield City Trust post 2024 because legally, legal and procurement regulations mean we have to go out to the market. So we, we can't continue, but it doesn't mean that it'll be a private sector organisation, okay? The, the financial model that we've done, we've modelled the finances over 30 years, but that doesn't mean the contract that is awarded to someone is 30, is, will be 30 years. Whilst we're not in that level of detail yet, it's much more likely that it might be a five-year plus an extension contract or a 10-year contract. But again, that's to be worked out. But it is not a 30-year contract that we're awarding. It's just that we've looked at the usable life, usable life, useful life of the facilities. And we know that for 30 years, we will need to put a significant amount of investment into facilities to keep them up to a certain standard. So we've done a financial model over 30 years, but not a contract over 30 years. It will be to be determined, but we have other contracts that are five years and then a review with an extension of five years, for instance. Okay? We may well go out in lots as well. So again, this is a detail to be determined. We might look at entertainment and leisure separately because that's what's done in many other cities across the UK. Again, to be determined. We will test the market as well to see what the market is telling us about how they want to respond. What we do know, when we did some of this testing pre-COVID, is that it's a very exciting opportunity for a city the size of Sheffield with this number of facilities. So we know that there is going to be appetite in, in, calling it the market, you know, the, the sector to, to, to put, to put a bidding. But we're going to test that and see what it tells us about how we split this up into lots or whether we're going one, one chunk. Ongoing control, sorry, no longer underwrite losses and the ongoing control. If I don't mind just passing that on to Tammy because she can explain about one of the existing contracts that we've got that isn't with SCT and how that works.
Okay, so we've got an example of this kind of arrangement already in the city. So the latest facilities that we built at Thorncliff and Graves, they were both put out to tender and Places Leisure were the ones that were selected as part of that bidding process. So they're actually on a 10-year contract at the moment. And in terms of control, through the specification, there are quarterly monitoring reviews, there are a lot of expectations set. When we receive responses from bidders, they submit something called method statement, question responses. And in there, it says what they're committing to throughout the period of the contract and we can hold them to that. So in terms of programming, pricing, all other things, we will have really clear expectations set as part of the procurement process and as part of that specification. That's something that we don't have at the minute, so we can't exercise that level of control. So by moving to this different arrangement, we will actually have far greater control in terms of influencing things such as pricing, social outcomes, do we want apprenticeships as part of this? How is it going to link in with youth services? And I think the other important thing to say on the Places contract is we actually receive a management fee for that contract. So we get a payment annually in return for them running the buildings. They've got them on full repairing and operating and insuring leases. So we've got everything in place in terms of that sort of long-term 10-year arrangement with them. And I think what I would also add is that Places previously have actually invested some of their own money, £900,000 into the Wise Wood facility to improve the gym there. And that's because that increased participation and helped the overall sustainability of that site. So that wasn't our money, that was kind of private investment that come through Places. So we do have experience of doing this and that contract is operating really well and is almost approaching back to pre-pandemic levels now, which is really, really good news, really positive. So within the city, we have got experience of this kind of arrangement already.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. I've got George and then Douglas. George?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you all for this report. I would just want to first say, I really think this is the right thing to do in full context. I really welcome the commitments that this is someone that can contribute positively towards future pressures in social care and the NHS. And I think, you know, now is the time to start that, you know, really close collaboration going forward on how to make this absolutely linked in with our, you know, council's vision for healthy communities. I also really welcome, although, you know, it will be a little time to come, I think people of Hillsborough already welcome, you know, a new build leisure centre. It might be next week, but it will, you know, this sets us on the time for that. And, and as much as Hillsborough Leisure Centre is loved, like many other cities, it is, you know, starting to look a bit tired in places. The question particularly I wanted to ask was, tell a question maybe with Ryan here, it might be helpful, just because I really appreciate, you know, councillor Turplin's concerns and councillor McDonald mentioned before around, you know, a great desire, I think, when we looked at it, that we would like to have a genuine option of doing this ourselves, but actually we can't. And I wonder if anyone can say a bit more about what, what it, to explain a bit more detail about the VAT situation, which is different between us as a council operating a facility, it wouldn't have to be a leisure facility, and an external operator, whether private or otherwise, and how that is different. Because it does seem to me that, a bit like the earlier report we heard today around the funding of school, of school, new school places, it feels like the council has a significant disadvantage set by a government in this situation. It might be good for people to hear just a little bit more about how, how that works. It doesn't seem a very fair situation. Thank you.
Thanks, George. I know you'll have to keep your conversations quite clear. I mean, I don't want to stray, stray into the appendix side, but if you can, just give us a, an overview. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Ryan Keyworth, I'm the Director of Finance and Commercial Services. I am not a VAT expert. So that means you're not going to get the complicated answer that you might have feared, Chair. The long and short of it is that the council is incredibly VAT-efficient in the way it operates, provided that it's doing things that are its primary purpose. So we can recover VAT very well on, on most of our things. If we stray beyond that into more commercial activity, and this would count as that, that it becomes much more difficult for us. There are limits on the amounts of VAT that we can recover in that way. If we were to operate leisure ourselves, we would add a significant amount of money that is potentially VAT-able into that calculation and it tips us over that, that limit. That has negative financial implications for us straightforwardly. A third-party operator of whatever construction, and each different type of business has its own challenges with VAT, depending on how they're set up, has the potential to recover more of the VAT than us. Sounds a fairly technical point and I suppose it is. It's millions of pounds and that's what makes the difference. I'm going to stop there before I tie myself in knots and anybody else for that matter.
No, no, thanks for that. I think there's always a time to put the shovel down. No, no, thanks for that. I think there's always a time to put the shovel down and that was it. Thanks. Thanks Ryan, thanks for that. Is that it George? Okay. Douglas?
Thanks, yeah. No questions on that. What about consultation? Can you just run through what a plan for public consultation is?
Okay, so we've got a whole series of public consultation planned. That will be taking place throughout December and January. So Kate Clark and my team's leading on that piece of work. So that will involve local consultation at a local level within the seven local area committee areas. So when I talk about local consultation, what we're not talking about is sitting in a village hall and expecting people to come and talk to us. We will be getting out into neighbourhoods and talking to people in places where they're going about and doing their business. So we'll have that very sort of local approach to consultation. And we're working with the LAX on how that will best work within each of their areas and have been supported with the, by the LAX with that work. We're also running an online consultation. So for people that don't want to turn up and physically speak to us, there'll be an opportunity to engage online. And we've also got a whole host of targeted consultation to make sure that we are reaching groups of people that have got, you know, special protected characteristics, to make sure that we're really engaging and getting feedback from all sectors and everyone across the city. So there is a detailed consultation plan being brought together at the moment. And as I've said, Kate's leading on that and I'm really happy to share that with members to get any views and feedback.
Real question is, what are you consulting on?
Ah, okay.
And what are you not consulting on?
Okay, so at this stage, we'll be consulting very broadly around the facilities. So asking questions about, you know, do you use the facilities at the moment? If you don't, why don't you? Those kind of questions. It'll be very high level at this stage. What would encourage you to use the facilities more? Those kind of questions. When we get into the detailed development proposals for each of the sites, we'll then obviously do lots more local consultation, very specific to that building. In addition to that, there are broader questions about physical activity in general. How active people are, what would help them to be more active? Because for me and my team, it's not just about these buildings and facilities. It's about our green spaces, the whole of the city, how people can move around and generally be physically active. So the questionnaire is actually much broader and the consultation that we're doing is much broader. So Sport England are really excited about the work that we're doing in that space because I think lots of local authorities don't actually have the insight as to what people want out of the facilities. We run these services. We've not really asked that question. So I think for us, it's a really positive that we're doing this and it should really help to shape our plans moving forwards.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it sounds like consumer survey really. That's fine. Okay, thanks. Got the questions about just specific things. There's a line in here, it's paragraph 152. And it talks about the review shows that the external model will return the highest level of income. And it says this because an external partner is likely to benefit from existing regional structures. And the question is, what does that mean? Yeah, 152.
Can I just add to Tammy's answer as well on the consultation? Because one of the other things that we're really keen to do is we're talking to colleagues in communities, in youth and communities about how we actually talk to people. So you mentioned a consumer survey, but we're really interested to hear from the people who don't consume at the moment as well. And get people to into those facilities. So we're trying to do the consultation differently to how we've done consultation before. So I just wanted to make that point as well.
That's a good point.
Okay, so when we talk about regional structures, it's the things that would sit in a traditional head office. So things like finance teams, HR teams, et cetera. So when you're spreading that across a big organisation, those costs are not as significant in terms of what we would be charged in Sheffield if it's a national organisation.
Okay. And what's the significance of the word regional? Where does that come into it?
Some of the testing that we've done in the market, we've got some operators that, for instance, operate in the north of England and we've got some that are actually national. These are the kind of organisations that we've benchmarked against. So some of them, the different models, different types of organisations. So some of the voluntary ones, they operate just in the south, for instance, some in the midlands, some in the north. But then others are national as well. So that's what we mean by regional and national economies of scale, if you want to describe it in a different way.
Okay, all right. So essentially it's getting in a bigger organisation. Okay, I couldn't stand that. Okay. And the final question was, you spelt the reserves one. I mean, this is probably more of a Ryan directed question. So the line, so again, 4.2.2 if you want to know, the investment program will require support from reserves in the first 10 years of the strategy. Obviously, drawing from reserves, are we okay doing that? Or how can we have confidence? I presume you're saying we are okay because that's why it's in here. How can we have confidence?
Thanks Douglas. Yes, yes is the honest answer. We've done the modelling against the reserves as we see them right now. This is all about risk and confidence, as you started to say. If we have confidence that we can secure a supplier who can deliver a financial model that we're happy with and we've got confidence that we can actually achieve that, it gives us confidence then to use reserves to cash flow the investment. We think we're going to need up to, certainly no more than 20 million pounds of reserves over about that 10 year period. If we start looking at different operator models, the risk goes up quite significantly as well as the financial return going down. Makes it much more difficult to provide that level of support. In fact, it becomes unaffordable quite quickly. So yes, we've done the work and we're happy that we can live with that, even in the context of the budget conversations we're now having because we need these reserves on a temporary basis, not forever. And we've also timed the developments with that in mind as well. So some of the profiling you see on the investment is linked to that modelling.
Thanks, that's like, final, final question is just about the whole risk thing for the benefit of elected members here. Because obviously, yeah, we're talking about actually a massive decision here, 30 year context. It's really a question, I mean, obviously you've been in a lot of time assessing risk and you're obviously satisfied enough to put forward this proposal. And the question is about what are the safeguards for us or, you know, for the people in, say, seven years' time who are sitting here saying, why do we sign up to this 30 year deal, you know? And they'll say then, it was obvious from the outset, it was all complete rubbish and never going to work. What's the safeguard to show that actually we won't get in that situation?
So I'll just take a part of that and then maybe ask Ryan to finish off. So there was something that you just mentioned before as well, Douglas, that was around the regional and national. And I think it's an important point to say that we've made a lot of assumptions in here and that that will require us to then remodel. So we've made, we're saying that regional and national are likely to. But when we test that market and we get the bids in, then we may need to remodel. And so some of the assumptions that we've made, we may need to look at again, such things as risk and what does that tell us? So I would just be clear that we've done a lot of work, but there's also an awful lot more work to do once we've got this approach agreed. And in terms of the safeguards, they're built into the contract specification. And something, I'll ask Tammy to explain a little bit more detail as to what happened during Covid and when we went into lockdown and what the impact on the existing contract. Tammy, can you just explain what happened there?
Yes.
Can we just kind of keep to the point about too straight, too fast? Because we really want to get this report discussed. Covid, we've examined that through scrutiny many times, the situations over Covid, et cetera. So can you just kind of keep to councillor Johnson's point if you can please?
Yes.
I suppose all I would say is, what we're not asking for here is approval to commit the council to a set of very specific projects, a vast amount of expenditure and a 30 year contract for anything. We're talking here about a 30 year strategy with a dozen projects, each of which will be looked at separately at that time. So we're not committing the council to a specific sum for a specific design, for a specific build on Hillsborough, to pick an example. That will come forward in due course and at the time we'll make the best decision we can. It's a little bit like the Heart of the City programme. You know, a few years ago, we started this enormous development of the city centre. That's changed and morphed as time's gone on, as times have changed. And that's exactly the approach we're taking here. I think also, looking at one or more different providers to actually operate the facilities, perhaps for a 10 year contract or something like that, gives us far more control than just saying, look, this is a 30 year deal, it's this or nothing. That's certainly not what we're talking about today. It's a much more long term strategy that we're talking to you about. But there'll be many stages in that as we actually move through. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for us to alter the course, correct the course if it turns out in 10 years' time that actually what we're saying today wasn't quite the right thing to do.
Yeah, thanks. That's very helpful reassurance, I think, for all elected members.
Thanks Douglas. If there's no more, I just want, do we come out? Okay, okay.
Thank you. It's a comment, not a question. But I'd just like to say that one of the things that reassures me is that the cost of doing nothing and keeping the facilities deteriorating, to me, is much less desirable than agreeing to invest. So this is something that I think is a much better use of council resources, basically. Thank you.
No, thanks Kate. Kind of leads me into my kind of comments really. And I speak not only as Chair of the Quebec Executive, but also as Leader of Council. Can I thank officers, the work that you've put in to get this here. I can't tell you how proud I am to get this on. This is a massive investment that we're going to take a step forward in on the health and wellbeing of all our residents. And out of that investment that we made back in the 90s has resulted in gold meddlists. It resulted in kids who've raised their aspirations. Myself and the Chief Executive went for a walk on our walkabouts, went to Zest where we saw the local community and the benefits that they are making. And we're doing that investment and the subsidy we're working there. We're looking at springs. I was brought up in Conquod and see how that benefits our communities. I'd also like to thank the trustees of SCT. You know, these are individuals who do it on their own, individually, in their own time, voluntary. Not always make decisions that we might not make, but we did ask them a couple of years ago to deliver this service on zero subsidy and we couldn't quite get it over the line. But if we do nothing, 63 million quid is what we're going to have to do and invest. So for me, I just feel that it's a public investment. It's one that we stand up, we either face this challenge or we back down. We were presented as an authority with Heart of the City. We either did nothing or we stood up and we faced that challenge. Today, I think we have to stand up and face the challenge. And I understand it's a 30 year, but we have to be brave. We have to look into the future. And we're not making this decision on behalf of the council. We're making it on behalf of the residents and for the health and wellbeing and also in those communities where we really need to get that aspiration for our kids up and running. So on those recommendations on the page, can I ask that we accept the recommendations? All those in favour? Again, thank you. And that is an historic. And can I just say to officers, I found this one of the best reports I've read. Thank you. Next is, oh, we don't, we're at the end. All right. There you go. Well, on that sermon on the bound, can I thank everybody for today's meeting? And we kind of reconsume tomorrow, I believe, at full council. So we're at the Octagon. Councillor Wood?
Just for the information of members, the GMB workforce have earlier accepted the pay offer and the strike is now over.
Thank you, Mr Wood. Thank you. And let's hope that both sides sort their differences out. Thank you very much. Thanks everyone.